It's approximately 6:40 PM. Today's November the 12th, 2019. We're here in the East Annex in Blue Island. And I'll make the following comment. Notice of public hearing. It's called a preliminary environmental impacts determination. Notice is hereby given to all residents, property owners, and water system users of the city of Blue Island, Illinois, that a public hearing will be held at the city hall East Annex on November the 12th, 2019, at 6:30 PM. Under Project L-17-5051, the city proposes the replacement of 5,419 existing water meters, the rehabilitation of the Thornton 1 million gallon elevated water storage tank, the construction of 720 feet of 8-inch water main, and the replacement of 22 lead service lines. Project L-17-5713 consists of replacement of approximately 236 lead service lines. This public notice is to provide an opportunity for the public to provide comments on the city's proposed construction. The project summary and preliminary environmental impact determination documents provided by the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, also known as the Illinois EPA, is available for review at 2434 Vermont Street, Blue Island, Illinois 60406. The document contains information including the project costs, its location, user rate impacts, and potential environmental impacts. This notice is to provide access to the documents and to satisfy Section 662.530 of the Illinois Procedures for Issuing Loans for the Public Water Supply Program of the Illinois EPA. These documents will be on file at the city hall for 10 days after the public hearing to allow for public comment. Written comments can be submitted to the city or directly to Bill Jokowski at the Illinois EPA Infrastructure Financial Assistance Section, P.O. Box 19276, Springfield, Illinois 62794-9276. Mr. Nagel. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. It's a pleasure to be back here again. So tonight, we're going to be talking about the preliminary environmental impact determination public hearing. It is a step in order to get a public loan for water infrastructure improvements. It is not mandating you go forward with the loan. It's a step you have to do to put you in position to take advantage of some preferential funding. So with it, we're going to talk about the projects that are being contemplated now. The first project is painting the Thornton 1 million gallon elevated tank. The second project is replacement of water main at 121st Place, then also the roadway reconstruction, 121st Place in Highland. The third project is lead service line replacements for approximately 258 homes. And the last project is a citywide water meter replacement. I'm going to take each one individually. This presentation should take about five to seven minutes, and then we'll open up for comments. So the elevated tank, the elevated tank was built in 1968, was painted probably about 22 years ago. We're going to be doing a recoding on it again. The life of the painting system is between 15 to 20 years. We're 22 years old. It's in need of it. The cost estimate's about $2.2 million. 121st Street water main job, that's the water main that's going to be going from approximately Maple Avenue all the way around the corner down to Highland, and we're going to be replacing the roadway also. The roadway's in such bad shape because there's been so many water main leaks and breaks on that water main, that there's so many patches and potholes, that the only thing you could do right now is replace the roadway and the water main. The project's approximately $1 million. Lead service line. The lead service lines for 258 lead service lines is going to be replacing the lead service line from the water main in the roadway up to the meter inside the house. So that's very important to note that we got 258 on here. The reason 258 was on here is to equate to the $2 million principal forgiveness loan. That means you're going to get $2 million free, and you can do 258 lead service lines for $2 million. There's absolutely zero skin in the game on this. It's a great opportunity, but you've got to be cognizant of this, is that that's the portion of the town that we're going to be taking care of. The rest of the city needs to be taken care of in the future. Our plan is hopefully to utilize the IEP A funding for the $2 million on progressive years, therefore going forward, if they have the funding available, to nibble away at the problem. This could be maybe a 15 to 18-year project on it. But think of this, folks. You're going to be removing lead service lines from the community. You're going to be doing it small chunks at a time. You're doing 100% with US EPA and IEP A funding. And you need to have this project plan and this type of loan in order to get that $2 And the last project we're talking about is the water meter replacement. So what that's going to consist of is replacing every residential, commercial, and industrial meter in the community. We're going to come with an automatic read system right now, that you can actually read every meter in the community by just clicking a button on a mouse. You'll get all that data coming in. There won't be any data handling errors going on. There won't be any manpower associated with it, like you're doing right now, where you're sending people out to read the meters on it. And that project's $4.7 million. So as of this time, we have Illinois Historic Preservation sign off, IDNR sign off, IEP A sign off pending this meeting we're having now. The schedule on the projects that goes to go forward using the IEP A loan? Eric, you got this. I got it.
Can you work this for us? I can't reach you here.
Okay, the schedule for the projects that we're going forward is going to be, we're going to have the project plan approved in January. We're doing the PEID public hearing right now. They'll probably take 30 to 60 days to review and approve it. After that, we could go to bid on the projects sometime in the summer, and then have the project final loans approved in the fall. Then right here, you can see how it's going to lay out. We're doing the project plan. These are quarters of a year. By the summer of 2020, we should be done and ready to go. By the fall and the beginning of 2021, the construction is going to be starting. Looking at this schedule here, you can see that it's going to take close to two, two and a half years to do everything on it. And it is close to a $9.9 million job. Can you advance it, Eric? So the cost estimates. We went over the Thornton elevated tank, went over the water main, and $1 million lead service line at $2 million, and meter at 4.7 for $9.9 million. Could you advance it, Eric? So IEP A has some funding options available for you. Because your community's less than 25,000, you could get a 75% discount rate on the low base interest they're offering right now. IEP A low-interest loans are approximately 2%, and then taking 75% interest on there, you'd be down to 1.5% on it. The criteria is that you've got to be less than 25,000 people. You've got to have a median household income less than the state average, and you've got to have an unemployment rate greater than the state average on it. So Blue Island, it turns out, right now, your census, your service population is 23,463. You can see you're only 1,500 people away from 25,000. If you get over that number in next year's census, you know, 2020 census, the data may be out in '21 or '22, you lose this opportunity. You will no longer be considered a small community. Your MHI, your median household income, Eric, can you go back? Is going to be set up at, you are below the state average, and your unemployment, you're higher than the state average. So if you look at the, taking advantage of the disadvantaged community interest rate at 1.5%, over a 20-year loan at $9.9 million, you save $580,000. Go to the next one. So this is where there are some really big savings coming. It's called the principal forgiveness. Because you're a disadvantaged community, you could take up to 60% of your loan off, or up to a maximum of $800,000. So right off the bat, if you go forward with these projects, use the loan, you receive $800,000 worth of principal forgiveness from the EPA. The next one is really big. Next one is the lead service line. IEP A recognizes that, you know, having lead service lines exposes the residents to potential problems in the future. What happened in Flint is that they had a mistake occur with the source water, and then by doing that, it corroded the inside of the pipes and exposed the lead service exposure. So on this here, what they're doing is they're allowing, they're allowing the city of Blue Island to take advantage of a $2 million principal forgiveness because your MHI is less than 70% of the state's threshold. Want to click it again? So right off the bat, you're going to get $800,000 plus another $2 million plus the interest savings. One more time, Eric. So for the total savings, one more time, it's going to be $3.38 million on a $9.9 million loan. So this is some pretty good savings. You're going to be able to take advantage with this if you want to go forward with it. One more time. If you said to yourself, well, we don't want to use the IEP A funding. We want to use a conventional bond. Talking to Treasurer Bellato, he told us that currently you could probably get a bond rate of 3.5%. The interest savings between a 1.5 and 9.9 million, a 3.5 is $2.9 million. It's $5.7 million. This work that we're talking about, all has to be done, no matter what. Can you do it again? So it's not going to be something that you could decide if, we're just going to put this aside. You're going to have to do it whether it's going to be between now and say another five to seven years. You're going to have to get this work done, and this is an opportunity to take advantage of it. So we look at what the yearly payment for $9.9 million is going to be, $2.8 million in principal forgiveness. For 1.5%, over 20 years, is $414,000. In 2024, the city currently has a water bond that's going to be expiring, that you're paying $450,000 a year. So up until that time, till 2024, you could swap that payment out. Your water bond for 450 is going to be expiring. Your IEP A loan will be in place by then for $414,000. Some of the IEP A rules here that we're talking about, I just want to make sure we're clear that we can't guarantee anything in this. And even in the IEP A rules, it says that there is no guarantee this principal forgiveness is going to be available. So the middle one says principal forgiveness is not guaranteed until the loan is issued at the date it's given to the community. The second one, it talks about the available amount is distributed to the first come, first served. That's actually the IEP A's wording, first come, first served. So as soon as you're in there for that, you could go after it on it. So just in summary on this, we have a total progress in $9.9 million. You're going to have to do the work with or without the IEP A funding. And the IEP A funding, you see right off the bat, is $2.8 million in principal forgiveness available, and close to about another $2.7 million in interest savings on it. The lead service lines that we're putting in, we're going to be reducing the risk of lead service line to the community. And you're going to be doing that entire project without putting any skin in the game. That's a full $2 million grant you're going to get from the state on it. The water meter project is going to reduce the uncontrollable water. It's also going to reduce the manpower needed to read the meters. Currently, you're reading the meters with people from the public works. You do it with a click of the mouse. And then so the good thing about this and talking with, you know, the financial people, the Treasurer Bellato, is that this appears to be, could be done without raising any water rates, by swapping those two bond issues out, by having the water bond paying for the IEP A loan in the future. And that's pretty much summarizes everything we had to talk about. Now we'd like to open it up for any questions from the Alderman?
Sure. Hi, everybody. Again, I'm Eric Alvarez. I'm the city engineer. I just wanted you all to know that, number one, there's a sign-in sheet for the IEP A PEID public meeting we just had at the back, and there's also comment forms. So in order to make a public comment, we ask that you please make also a written comment and turn that comment into the clerk's office. The entire project plan will be on display at the clerk's office for the next 10 business days.
Mr. Nagel?
Yes, sir. Got a question. What's the life expectancy of our tower tank?
Great. The elevated tank should be 20 years. Should be able to get 20 years out of it, the painting of it. And your bond issue is for 20 years too.
But what about the whole tank and all?
Well, the whole tank, you should be able to get 100 years out of it, based on normal maintenance occurring every 15 to 20 years out of it. A water main should get 100 years out of it. The meters, you should get 15 to 20 years out of it. The lead service line, sorry, the lead service line replacement with copper service line, you should get close to 100 years out of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, ma'am.
Do we have to apply for the whole $9.9 million? Can we apply for just a portion?
You could apply for a portion of it, but you've got to be cognizant of a couple things are going on here. One, you're very, very close to the census data of 25,000. If you get over 25,000, you lost, you lost $1 million in lead service lines because you no longer be a disadvantaged community. You go from $2 million to $1 million. And you also lost a small community interest rate, which was $588,000. So that's where this kind of not, say, urgency comes into play, but I would say that this money for the lead service line just came about because of what happened in Flint, Michigan. Okay, the US EPA made this, gave this money to all these, all the states, and it just so happens it's coinciding with what the 2020 census is going to be. And right now, your census, you're 1,500 people below 25,000. But I think everybody's recognizing that that number could be going up because you're trying to get people to say, we live in town and we're getting more MFT funds for it. A lot of stuff going on with the census too.
Let me find out what the procedure is, whether we can go into the public or it has to be just here. The public has to go into written. What is the procedure, Mr. Nagel?
Mayor, I've been to a couple of these so far, and that the public is more than welcome to give a comment.
Let me find out first if there's any other questions or comments from the Alderman. Alderman, go ahead.
So the water meter replacement, is that a necessity or no?
Yes, ma'am, it is. Your water loss is high. And your water loss is high because you have 5,500 accounts, over 5,000 water accounts, and the water meters are not as accurate as they could be. There's data handling error, there's age errors, there's just, they run slower, the older, the older they get. And really, if that's, that is going to be something that we cannot tell you what your savings is going to be on it. We can't tell you what your errors are going to be on it, how much more you'll be able to get out. We know it's going to improve. That's all we know it's going to do.
But you don't have an estimate as loss?
We do. We do know what your loss is, what your loss is now. It's about 20%, maybe 25%. So we're saying that you do the water meters, you want to recover 100% of that. You recover some of it. We don't know what's involved as far as service line leaks, or what's involved as far as water main, water main leaks, or data handling errors.
I just want to make a initial point, but I think another important benefit is that it'll basically free up a public works crew, four or five people, for a whole week, everyone, to, it is currently, two weeks, it's currently reading water meters, so that'll be the public works.
That's a great point. I just think you could read the entire town with a click of a mouse, as opposed to now. Then you could get on standard billing type too, for the entire town too. I mean, you could do a lot of changes with this.
And the tank painting, what's the necessity about?
You've extended your useful life of it. It needs to get upgraded and painted, and then take advantage of the IEP A funding for it.
So without the painting, you mean it does not extend life?
No, you know what's happening right now? There was corrosion going on inside the tank, and the tank should be, the paint system should last 15 to 20 years. You're at 22 years now on it, and it's just going to get worse. And the corrosion, we can't tell you if it's going to corrode so bad it's going to fall over. I highly doubt that's going to happen. But what it's going to do, if we could get it before it gets to be too bad, we can minimize the structural repair we've got to do. So a structural repair could be some of the crossbeams, or some of the bolts that would corrode through, or some of the pitting on the inside walls. And the pitting, the steel thickness is about a quarter inch. To get to a pitting in there, it could reduce that, and we have to put patches in. I've seen it before when they go long, and sometimes you're even stuck even taking like the entire roof section off and put a new roof on it.
The lead pipe replacement?
Mm-hmm.
Who's determining who the 258 homes are or whatever?
It's a great question. So one thing, we're on a committee, and the committee is Mr. Bellato, Mr. Hoizer, the manager, and Eric Alvarez, myself, and my miss, and Mark Miller, and Jim Holzroth. It was determined that we wanted to pick areas that were not in the TIF area, because we felt that if this funding ran out, we could hopefully use TIF funds to remove the service lines. We picked areas that we did not do the roads recently, because we're going to tear up the roads when we go in there. Yeah, okay. And then the other thing too, is we thought that being, you know, the northwest part of the town, just start going across, moving down. And hopefully, we'll be getting a $2 million forgivable loan every year. Hopefully, President Trump will have a stimulus package that he's been talking about for public works jobs to get funding on it. Right now, you don't have any money to put the service lines in. Okay, we know, we know that. We know that there is this $2 million fund out there that you could take advantage of it. And so when you think about this, Alderman, it could be 15, 18-year job.
Right.
I mean, it's going to be little chunks at a time, but every time you do it, you're going to be removing lead from your system.
So does that disturb any, disturbing it? Does that, is that going to cause an issue with, as far as lead? You start taking out lead pipes from the system, is that going to increase lead levels nearby?
Let's talk about that, just so you know this, that the main line water mains in the streets are not lead. They're cast iron or ductile iron. It's the service lines coming off into the home. We're going to be disconnected from the service line and running a new copper line into the home. Everything on interior plumbing inside the building is exactly the same. We're not touching the interior plumbing. So we're not doing that. So your answer is, will it disturb it? I would say that it could, but we're taking the lead out.
So, and I was always of the understanding that it was the homeowner's responsibility from the B box in?
Yes, sir, it is.
So we're going all the way into the house?
Right. Well, that's a great question you're bringing up. It is. I could tell you, I could tell you why. The EPA is not going to allow what's known as a half-service line anymore. And in the old days, when I said the old days, like 10 years ago when I was doing it in town, we would do the water main service lines from the water main up to the B box, which is at the right-of-way line. Then from the right-of-way line into the home is responsibility owner. The EPA is not going to allow that. And EPA has funds available right now to go on private property to do the work. Think of the logistics behind this. We have to communicate with 258 homeowners. We have to communicate with 5,000 homeowners to replace all the meters to make sure that we can do the meter change out and the service line. But it's the only way to eliminate lead from the system is to take it out. And that's what the US EPA found out, and that's what the US EPA has given every state a ton of money to start doing this work. And that's what we want to get you in line for, to take advantage of it. We can't guarantee this money's going to be there in the summer. We don't know that for sure. And when the loan, if the loan goes forward and gets approved, we can't guarantee in 2021 fiscal year is going to be there. We know what the rules are now. We know there's opportunity out there, and we've got a lot of communities that are trying to take advantage of this too. We want you to be first in line. Yes, ma'am.
It seems to me that we just recently had all of our water meters replaced.
I don't recall that, to be honest with you. I've been here for a long, long time. I mean, with Gary Kozlowski days?
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think it was, but, do you know, Jim?
I don't know.
It wasn't every home.
We don't have an automatic reading system on them anyways now. So if they were changed out, and I know that they have the system where they change out so many meters a year, we just don't have an automatic reading system on it. An automatic reading system is the big labor part of it, is that going out there, reading and handling the data, transmitting it back.
I know my water meter was changed. It used to be in the basement. Now it's outside the house, so that they can read it with the handheld device.
Do you know what year that was?
I would say within the last six years.
Did they actually change your water meter, or did they just add that thing where they can read it from outside the house?
They just added the module.
Yeah, because my meter's in the basement, and they have a reader outside.
Yeah, and I thought they just added that to my water meter.
It's just a module to read the water meter that's in the basement.
Ms. Carr, we could look into that and get back to you on it. I don't, I don't, if I, I mean, if there was a citywide meter change out, I would have known about it. And I think it was done in dribs and drabs as funding was available. And that's the best people could do with the funding that was available. I mean, when they found a bad one, they changed it. I mean, that's how it was done. And it's like, no fault to anybody, it just wasn't enough money to do all this work. I mean, you can see it's $4.7 million.
Mr. Nagel, how long does a water meter last?
Should be about 15 years, maybe 15 or 20 off it. But they start running slower the older it gets. So the older ones are running slower, which means you're getting less revenue for the water you're actually selling.
They're making up some damn revenue.
Any other questions from the Alderman? Alderman, go ahead.
Tom, with the copper piping, is it insulated or sleeved with another type of fabric?
No, sir, it's not. It's going to be directionally drilled underground, and there won't be a sleeve going around it unless there's something in the way that we want to protect. And I can't think of that right now, what could be in the way. So it'll be a directional drill going through. We're not going to have like a long trench from the water main going into the home. We'll have a pit, go directional drill it, come up to the home, excavate around the home, pierce the wall, and go right into where the meter is now. So you can see how much is going to be involved with the residents. You know, but like I said, the best thing about it is, there's no money as far as the city's got to put up on it, and you're removing lead from the system. And that's the only way, full-proof way, say that we're not going to have lead contamination is taking the lead out. Yes, sir.
What size line is that copper pipe coming from?
It's going to be three-quarters inch. Okay, currently, I think you have five-eighths inch now. So it's like, not a big price difference. We want to upgrade it a bit, so.
So it won't be like affected by like the natural minerals, like our pipelines, not with calcium and things of that nature?
It shouldn't, sir. On the inside the pipe, I highly doubt there's any kind of effects with the minerals because we're getting Lake Michigan water. There is not a lot of, there's not a lot of calcium buildup like you get from well water on it, so it shouldn't, so. And it's been the standard for, you know, for 40 years now, 50, 50 years now. And the EPA approves it. And back in the 20s and 30s and 40s, lead pipe was the standard, and the EPA approved it. We found out later that there's adverse health effects associated with it, and you're changing it out now. Yes, ma'am.
It's my understanding that with new codes for fire suppression, every house that's built needs to have an automatic sprinkler. Or let's say a house is more than 50% destroyed in a fire. When they rebuild that house, it has to have a sprinkler system. And with the sprinkler system, they need about, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, inch and a half?
I think one inch or an inch and something like that.
But the house has to be a...
So...
But the house has to be a service point for two...
I'm just thinking, looking towards the future, why would we install a three-quarter inch or a seven-eighth inch pipe going into a home if they're going to eventually require it?
I could explain. We will replace whatever size is there now. If your codes say it's got to be something larger, we could put some larger. The cost is not going to be so much the material. It's not going to be so much to go from a three-quarter inch to an inch or an inch and a half. The cost's going to be the labor on it. But whatever's out there, we could do that. And then as far as the project cost estimate goes, the EPA mandates that we put contingencies on there for just what we're talking about now, and it should be covered in the 4.7 million on it. But if your codes are going to change, and you're going to mandate everybody gets an inch and a half service line, we've got to put inch and a half service line in, obviously. But that's not going to be free. If you're expecting you're going to sprinkle every single family, family home, and you want that, we could put that, we could put that in.
I think it's only for a certain square footage on it.
Any other questions? From the Alderman? None? You want to open up maybe for a couple of the public?
Yes, sir, we'll be fine. Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Again, there are, I guess, some notations in the back where they can write their questions and then submit them to, to the clerk's office for pickup and delivery.
There's a lot of rumors going around. Have you already decided what company's going to do to repairs on the water?
This is all preliminary. It has to go out to bid, from my understanding. Is that correct, Mr. Nagel?
Or it will go out to bid? Or it will go out to bid?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
There's certain, again, there's certain standards from the IEP that has to be met, and contractual, and everything like that, so all that has to be followed by their rule.
Okay, because we don't need the same company that did Longwood to do the whole city, make a mess out of that, too.
I understand.
It seemed like we had a tendency of getting people who don't do the job or back it up to do work for the city. And we eventually paid the same thing twice, or just have a mess. So, that's why I'm concerned.
Absolutely noted.
And that will be publicized, whatever bids that was taken out.
Oh, yes.
Okay, was good. All right, thank you.
I have a bunch of questions and concerns, and they involve...
Ms. Green, could you do me a favor? Could you bring them? There you go.
Yes. I have a bunch of concerns and questions regarding the information in the project book that include, it's our commercial customers that have the greatest water, water loss. That's number one. The future serv, in the book, the project plan, the future service area does not include selling waters to other communities. I know that one of the things that was being discussed and considered simultaneously was selling water to other communities. So, one of the things we're going to certainly want to do is make sure that our pumps are in condition to sell water to other communities. If we want to become Blue Island Water King, and, and sell water to Posen, sell water to Homewood, sell water to other communities that are looking for, for water. Currently, they're saying that our projected water usage is going to be 3.368 million gallons per day. That's not going to, that number is not going to, is going to change if we're selling water to other communities. The pump station, at, the Thornton pump station failed, according to the EPA, three years ago. The same time that the resolution was introduced, removing roughly $5 million from the water fund. That money should have gone directly toward recoating the interior of the Thornton tank and painting the exterior of the Thornton tank. So, we're two years out on the other side of taking care of the Thornton tank that failed with the life expectancy of 20 years. We have, one, two, we have nine individual Illinois EPA violations that have not been addressed. And at the, again, at the time that the money was removed from the water fund, that money should have gone directly to taking care of the Thornton water tank, which is where you live. And, yes, there are issues with the consumer confidence rule, the consumer confidence report, coliform in the water. I, I hope it tastes real good, because you live down there. And that's $5 million, that should have went directly to that Thornton water tank. One of the things we want to look at is, what, what is the condition of our two water pumping stations? And what is the current age of our water meters? Since Robinson Engineering has been providing the engineering service to Blue Island for decades, they should know the answer. With considering smart meters, one of the things that was not discussed in the presentation was whether those smart meters would be radio, frequency, or cellular. Doesn't matter which one you choose. You have to carefully choose the entity that's going to provide your service, and make sure that they're going to be around 20 years from now, if you choose to do that. My other investigation revealed that McCook, who sells millions and millions of gallons of water, and they are the water kings, they don't use water meters in their residential homes. The residents get their water for free. We don't have to have water meters. We don't have to spend that four, four or five million dollars on water meters. It's not necessary. The water meters that they use for their businesses are census water meters, the same kind of water meters we have in Blue Island in our residence and in our businesses. Gary Kozlowski obviously did an excellent job before he put anything in place for Blue Island. Yes, on page, page four of Selected Alternatives, 4.2, it clearly states that the Thornton water tank was last painted in 1997. And because after 20 years, the interior coating is assumed to be failed, as well as, to be failed, as well as due to the age of the existing coating system. The service line replacement needs to be monitored during, doing what? Because, yes, those service lines do have lead seals. So, yes, you're going to want to monitor those homes to make sure that you're not getting the lead into those residences. And, yes, the code is for one point, one and a half inch pipe. We don't have the age of the existing water meters, the water, and we're talking about replacing 236 existing lines. Yes, there's a, a cost involved in all of this. The 1.84 was the amount, the interest amount in the book. Is that a fixed rate, or is it variable? We need to know. One of the things that is clearly spelled out, in addition to all of that, is that the money is going to come from the general sewer water fund. Blue Island doesn't have a general sewer water fund. We do have a general fund, and we have a water fund. And we've watched over and over again, these funds get commingled. We watched over and over again, these funds get transferred by the treasurer. Nobody questions, "What are you transferring? What is this going toward?" We don't have a real clear, good set of eyes as this money slashes around, never to be seen again, like the $5 million that disappeared. Water use charges are erroneous, according to the book and the amounts that are incorporated in this project. According to this, we're being charged $6.31 per thousand gallons. Anybody want a refund? Because you're paying a lot more than that. Anybody else want a refund? Get some money back? Because this, these numbers are erroneous. The water tank costs have exponentially increased. A couple of years ago, when it was discussed, possibly recoating and painting that Thornton water tank, it was going to be $200,000 less than the proposed $2,205,000 currently. What is suggested is a few things. The first thing Blue Island really needs is a work group that, to explore what our Blue Island's water system needs. What does Blue Island's water system need to function more effectively? Should water charges be abolished for Blue Island homeowners? Should Blue Island sell water to other communities? What do, what, what, what do our pumps need in order to sell water to other communities? All of those issues and concerns are completely, completely omitted from the project that was initiated and submitted January 2019, and updated June 2019. Again, no question, this project absolutely needs to be updated, because this information is muddy, fuzzy. We need clarity and clarification. I would absolutely, hands down, hands down, say, the first thing that needs to be done? Get that Thornton water tank reco, re-coated. I do not want the people down in California Gardens getting sick from that water tank. That should have been done two, three years ago. That $5 million would have easily repainted that water tank. And, yes, Carmen, yes, yes, you and Kevin introduced that resolution on February 23rd, 2016. Nothing to smile about, Kevin. Nothing to smile about. Because, guess what? Taking money out of the water fund when it's needed for other things is actually illegal, and it's particularly okay if you don't get caught. But here's the thing. While it was done very handily, under the radar, with the previous city attorney, Shante Rains, and the resolution 2016-003, look it up, and you introduced it through committee, and everybody voted to approve it, that money should have went toward taking care of that water tank, and taking care of the people who live in Blue Island. And it didn't. And I sincerely hope that there are consequences for those actions. And, yes, Treasurer Blotto, you did coach them to take that money out of there, so you could get a better bond rating for the tax anticipation warrant, and the money was never put back. Before you speak, let me finish. That money should have went back, that money should have painted that water tower, coated that water tower, and painted the exterior of that water tower. We wouldn't be standing here talking about this right now. Please, before you do anything else, get a work group together, get all of these real issues teased out. Because I think that there are folks who would like to sell water to Posen, might want to sell water to Homewood, might want to sell water to the other communities that are out there looking for another water source. My hat's off to the wonderful receiver in Harvey. He has driven down the cost of water to Harvey water consumers, the communities that are buying water from Harvey, to $4.51, which is actually 53 cents more than the city of Chicago is charging Har, is charging Harvey. I think Robert Handler's done an excellent job. He could work for me on any given day.
Anything else?
Yes. I'll be looking forward to hear about what we're going to do with this work group and get this stuff started, because this is all wrong.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I normally don't respond until someone puts my name on it.
Don't, Carmen, don't. Because what you did, honestly, you could end up in jail with it.
The $5 million. You've had your say, I listened. Your $5 million, if you were on top of it seven years ago, or 10 years ago, was not under my watch. That was money that was taken, or used, for whatever reason, under the previous administration. And before we did anything, there's a resolution that the clerk can pull up, was voted on the council floor, because it's money that, that water fund is allowed to generate money for the city. It's a profitable...
Miss Green, let him speak.
The water is a profitable, supposed to be paying certain bills and repairing certain things. We're actually not even where we're supposed to be in, in, in that money fund for the water yet. We're not even close to it. Okay? So, the bottom line is this, it was not under my watch. And actually, even in 2009, I think it was, I don't know. But I've been the treasurer for, this is my seventh or eighth year. Okay? And this was happened before. It was taken out before.
Ms. Green.
Not under my watch. And prior to me, the treasurer did not even have the right to transfer. Okay? It was done under somebody else's watch. As I've taken over for treasurer, and I've, I've been taken over for transfer responsibilities, nothing, not even a penny, is, is, everything's accountable. For the water, every, every dime that comes out is accountable for pay, salaries, or, or repairs. If you want to slander somebody, okay, make sure you got the information correctly. And that, and maybe I, we should ask Hauser Clerk to pull that resolution up. It was either '13 or '14 when we did it, that we wiped it off the slate, because we were advised by CPAs, two different firms. It's money that's owed, it's owed money to the city. You're, you, you are the city. You can wipe it off to have your better accounting principle and better credit rating for the city. The, the, the water that was owed for the golf course was not taken off, because it's money owed to the city. And that's why we didn't, we kept that on there. The golf course still owes two or $3 million to the city. In the past three, four years, we've been paying 50, whatever we could pay back, to the corporate fund. There's accounting, and there's CPAs, and there's people that we take advice from, that they're accountable for giving us that advice. I'm not an accountant, but I'm a damn good a business person. With money coming with, I know every penny that goes in and out. Prior to me, no, I can't answer for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Treasurer, any other comments briefly? If not, we've got to move on to regular meeting. I'll close this meeting. The time is 7:25. Today's date is November the 12th, 2019, and we're closing the special meeting regarding what you have just heard. Got a motion, I, well, just close those, it's closed.